Hi, this is 702. A call to order the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for August 21st, 2024. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in at 1-646-558-8656. Meeting ID 795-950-7035, passcode 907148. Moving on to attendance this evening, Donovan Riley, Greg Peresino, and Tom Tullman are serving remotely. Diane Carroll is in attendance. Myself, Greg Mealy, also attends as our city planner, Jeremy Leifert. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Minutes for Approval A for July 17th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'm moving, Mr.
Who's that? Greg, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Donovan. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, Tom Tullman.
Thanks, Tom. So, so moved.
You're, you're, yeah, everyone, yeah, we only have five here, so we're all seated.
Yep. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, the time is 7:04. Public hearings. Public hearing continued from July 17th, 2024 to August 21st, 2024, 7:00 PM. City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A 104 Grove Street Assessor Map, 118 Block 017, Lot 015. Applicant Anthony De Rosa, Proposal Special Exception Number 20-04 in Site Plan Application Number 1509, Wave Minimum Parking Requirements and Change Use of the Property From Office Use to Assembly slash Church Use in an R6 Residential Zone. This application is being withdrawn by the applicant. Jeremy, you got a letter?
Yeah, it's a very brief one. To whom it may concern, Lighthouse Assembly is withdrawing the change in use and parking waiver for 116 Grove Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Thank you. Sincerely, Anthony De Rosa.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, the time is 7:05. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four B, Public Hearing Beginning at 7:00 PM, August 21st, 2024, City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. B, 263 Midgen Avenue, Assessor's Map, 109 Block 016, Lot 010. Applicant Martin J. Connor, AICP, on behalf of McCall Foundation, Inc. Proposal Special Exception Number 24-06 in Site Plan Application Number 1516. Change of Use From Rooming House to Office Use and Wellness Center in an R6 Residential Zone. Serving on the Commission this evening is Donovan Riley, Greg Peresino, Tom Tullman, Diane Carroll, myself, Greg Mealy, also attends as our city planner, Jeremy Leifert. Commissioner Carroll, do you have a legal notice, please?
This is part here? You're reading this as well or not?
Yeah, you can start right here, right down there.
City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, Legal Notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission has a scheduled public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, in the City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A 263 Midgen Avenue Assessor's Map, 109 Block 016, Lot 010. Applicant Martin J. Connor, AICP, on behalf of McCall Foundation, Inc. Proposal Special Exception Number 24-06 in Site Plan Application Number 1516. Change of Use From Rooming House to Office Use and Wellness Center in an R6 Residential Zone.
Thank you, Commissioner Carroll. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Martin Connor. I'm a Certified Planner with the American Institute of Certified Planning. Been a planner for over 35 years, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant. This is a change of use as, as you described.
Were the mailings done, Marty?
The mailings have been turned in, actually.
Oh, okay. And was it signed, posted for the time required in our regulations?
Yes, I've checked it periodically, and it was there this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Sure. So, the property at 263 Midgen Avenue is a beautiful historic property. The building itself was built in 1913. It's a brick building. It's next door to the funeral home, so I'm pretty sure most of the commission members are familiar with it. It's been used as a rooming house by the state of Connecticut for elderly and vacant, though, for quite a few years. I know when I was city planner, Jeremy and I visited that site with some people that were interested in developing it. It all fell apart. Fortunately, it's going to be saved by the McCall Foundation. They want to change the use into an office and a family wellness center. And I'm going to ask Maria, the head of McCall Foundation, to come up and give you a description of the change of use. And then if we could, we'll have our civil engineer do a presentation. We have a fabulous landscape plan to review with you. And Michael Bowe, our architect, will tell you a few minor changes to this historic building that are being proposed.
Thank you, Marty.
All right. So for the, the plan that's up, this looked like the most complete picture here, so that's why I went with this one. But if you want me to change it, just let me know.
Emily, are you okay to speak from the landscape plan, just?
Whatever you want, I can change.
Jeremy, I can speak.
Okay.
Go from there. Thanks, Marty. Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Maria Koutat Skinner. I'm President and CEO of McCall Behavioral Health Network, which is the DBA of McCall Foundation Incorporated. So the application before you, as Marty talked about, is for a change of use so that we can use this space to serve children and families. And the vision that you can kind of see on the plan in front of you would be that the space, there's, there's three stories there, and it would be used primarily by therapists, children and family therapists, as well as parent educators and professionals who work in the prevention space and go out and do work upstream to help prevent any issues related to mental health, trauma, and any kind of addiction issues for area children and families. And so this will be the launchpad for that work, and it also is a place to gather children and families. And we will employ people who are, have expertise in all of those areas, and also with a special focus on therapists who are bilingual. So the inside will be a beautiful space to conduct that therapy and have group sessions. And the outdoor space, as you can see and you'll hear in some more detail, will have adequate parking for staff and for parents, as well as easily accessible recreation areas and places for programming to also happen outside. The carriage house will also be used for recreation, especially in the colder months. We are really thrilled about this. As you know, I'm, Torrington's my hometown. I have, you know, admired this building for a lifetime, and it served folks with disabilities for a long time very well, and it's been sitting empty and really is what we think to be the perfect home for these outpatient services and for children and families to gather. So I, I'll end there unless you have questions for me, and then I'll turn it over to all the wonderful architects.
Maria, roughly how many staff would be in there?
About 15.
I'm sorry.
About 15.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Maria, where are these services being available now?
Uh, right now, they're in several locations. So we rent space over on Prospect Street. We have our adolescent services on our main campus at High Street. So that's working okay, but it mixes our adult clients with our children, and that's not ideal. We really want to have dedicated space for children and families. And our family services are actually launched out of the basement of Trinity Church. So these are three departments, three service lines that will come together. We see a lot of intersectionality between all of those programs. They're all really focused on children and families. So to have them under one roof and be able to work closely with one another, we think will also serve the community best.
There's no overnight stays?
No overnight stays. No.
Continue.
So next, I'd like to introduce Emily from Civil One, and she's going to just tell you about some of the engineering changes that we're going to make. We are relocating the driveway. We're creating a new parking lot. It will have more than adequate parking. In fact, we're even going to have a couple spaces where if you've got an electric vehicle, you, you can charge up. So Emily's going to come up and tell you about the engineering.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Good evening. For the record, my name is Emily Jones, Professional Engineer with Civil One Engineering in Woodbury. We're excited to be part of this project as a site civil engineers, working closely with Marty and our landscape architect team. So currently on the site, as has been discussed, there's a single three-story brick building and then a carriage house in the rear. Right now, the driveway is a narrow driveway that comes in on the north side of the property and wraps around the back of the building where there's a large sort of unmarked parking area. There's no formal storm drainage on the site right now as far as detention or catch basins or conveyance or anything like that. And basically, the site sits on a little bit of a hill with the house at the high point of the property. So about half of the property drains towards Midgen Avenue, and half of the property drains to the rear towards adjacent properties in the back. With the changes, we're going to be closing off the curb cut, the existing curb cut in the north and that driveway and parking area. And we're going to instead be having a curb cut and parking area to the south of the building as shown on the plan. This allows the backspace of the building to be used for passive recreation, meeting space, and walking areas. It's beautiful. The landscaping design is beautiful, and I can't take any credit for it. My stuff is all boring and underground. So our, our general purpose was to design the grading plan and then perhaps even more importantly, the, the storm drainage plan. So if you're looking at sheet, let's see, we have a little bit of a demo plan, but the next page. Oh, next page. There we go. Okay. Actually, you can even go to the next one if you want. There we go. Okay, so this is a site grading and drainage plan. So the proposal for all of the patios and walkways is to use a pervious paver material that promotes infiltration and groundwater recharge. It decreases runoff to adjacent properties. So we're using that for all of the patios and walkways. And then the pavement in the parking area is going to now be collected by a formal storm drainage system that they didn't have before, consisting of two catch basins that catches all of that water and directs it to a subsurface infiltration chamber system. Now, this system is designed to capture and treat almost all of the stormwater that comes on the site from the two through the 100-year storm. We are really lucky, I think you're really lucky in this town in general and on this site where you have type A, very well-drained sandy soils. So based on the available mapping and some percolation tests that we did on the site, we expect most of this stormwater to infiltrate into the ground. You know, lately, over the last year or so through last winter, I think stormwater has been on everybody's mind as we've gotten these crazy storms. And, you know, everything's just a little bit more intense. So all of this has been designed to the latest DEP standards, which they just updated this year. And we use the latest NOAA precipitation data, so it's all updated continuously so that we can make sure that we're staying up to date with the latest rainfall. So essentially, there is an outlet to this subsurface chamber, but it's located sort of at the top of the underground basins. Most of the water that's collected will infiltrate into the ground. And then in some of the larger storm events, some will go out of that emergency overflow and tie into the street drainage, which is interesting because that doesn't exist now, but is in the works to be installed. So we're coordinating that with the city as well. There's no flood plain on the site, so we analyzed both the water going to Midgen Avenue and to the rear of the property. There's no detention proposed for the rear of the property because we significantly decreased the drainage area going to those properties in the back. So the runoff to that back property line is decreased simply because we're directing more water towards Midgen Avenue. And the runoff towards Midgen Avenue was decreased in both peak flow rate and volume from the storm drainage design. So that's really it. It's pretty straightforward as far as our grading and drainage, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
The stormwater retention infiltration area, that's all permeable?
So.
The rest is paved?
This is also paved. It's, um, it's underground plastic chambers. Yeah.
All right. So the, the parking lot is asphalt paving. The walkways are all permeable.
Yes, and the patios and everything like that. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Any commissioners have any questions?
I have a question for Jeremy. So how does, I know at ARC, we discussed, you know, the work that the town's going to be doing on Midgen Ave, right? So has there been anything determined as far as when this will start and coordinate with that work?
I think the applicants could probably update better with that on the timing. Because I, because the, I think the time of, the timing of the Midgen Ave work has been a little fluid.
It was supposed to start last April.
Right.
I think it's kind of a race to who gets going first, but more than likely, I don't think the state has signed off on it yet. So more than likely, we're interested in getting started earlier. So if that's the case, then, you know, we are working with the engineering department on how it's going to connect the drainage, and we may have to put our sidewalk in before the other sidewalks are put in.
So this year?
Well, this next year coming up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners have any questions at this point?
Two.
All right. Please continue. Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to ask Lou to come forward, Lou Fusco. And he's going to show you a very detailed landscape plan. We've worked really hard on that. I think it's way above and beyond what normally the commission sees. We've worked with Jeremy's staff on the lighting and the landscaping and following the new regulation that you just approved regarding native plantings. So Lou's going to dazzle you also with a flyover.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lewis Fusco, Registered Landscape Architect, and it's been a pleasure working with this group. And I think to both Marty and Maria's points, explaining how the, the center is going to be used really influenced how we looked at the outside. And I think our earlier conversations were about the fact that, you know, the, the young people and the families that will be coming here, giving them that experience, even if it's a, a mother waiting for, you know, a son or a daughter in the building, to have space to outdoors. So we looked at the entire property. If you, if you're looking right now, if you're familiar with the property, directly behind the building, between the carriage house and the main building, is the parking lot. And original thoughts were continuing parking or drive in that area. And it just seemed to be the most logical location to expand and create a really interesting, inviting outdoor space that someone didn't have to cross parking to get to an outdoor area. So the area where you're seeing those little blue dots, little tables and all, are actually a plaza with seating. And we created the one covered area would be a possibility for a burglar element, a pavilion sort of sitting area that could allow for, thanks, Jeremy, for an outdoor group in, 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 in clement weather as well. Also allowing for various groups, you know, discussions or, or outdoor spaces were created. We have the lower section of the property. The property drops down behind, and we thought that could be a, just a strolling path, some benches, some seating, a seating area for outdoor recreation, as well as for outdoor group meetings in a more natural setting. Fortunately, the, the backdrop there of the existing trees really gives it a whole different environment from the rest of the property. So it becomes a nice space. We've, everything, as Marty had mentioned and as Emily had mentioned, the pad, the patio surfaces and walks will all be permeable. We've specified a very detailed planting plan of all native plantings. We were sensitive to the neighbors by providing a screening along the property lines of pretty dense screening from the parking lot. There is some screening in certain areas right now, you know, at the neighbors' area. The parking, we've provided for the handicap parking. We break the parking lot up with some trees as well to soften the overall look of it. And then in the front of the building, the, the original entry, we still celebrate that with a new walkway and seating area there, which I thought might be like either for a spot for waiting parents at times or also just employees sometime out for a break and just to experience the, the streetscape as well. So we haven't like, you know, closed us off totally from the street. So that gives you a general overview of everything that we've tried to do. We've added EV charging stations and benches and seating areas, total handicap accessibility through all of the paving areas so that anyone can access all spacing. And I think we tried to make the best use of the entire site. We do have a little, I don't know if you want to show the little, we, we did put it into a 3D model.
Before you switch over, just a quick question. In the rear, you have an existing chain link fence to remain, but you're proposing a new six-foot-high privacy fence, what, adjacent to it?
Yeah, it was adjacent to it. We could remove the old, but at the time, I wasn't 100% certain if some of it was on the neighboring's property. That is something that we could inquire about and see about.
Okay.
I did meet with the neighbor next door at the funeral home. And if you remember, there is some of that old fencing, you know, that's very historic in the area.
Right.
And although we were trying to be sensitive to the funeral home and as well as our property, we, he was, he was interested in us keeping a portion of that historic fencing.
In place.
So we pretty much are keeping that in place up until the building itself. And then from that point on, we've got, you know, a fencing that'll screen the property on, on the three sides.
I don't know if you want to go back to the plan. I can show you the areas where the plan or... There are some sections of it that are in better shape than others. So I think we can salvage sections of the existing fence to reuse, but... Hey, great. Okay.
Because the front is more wrought iron, correct?
Yes, we have wrought, the wrought iron is...
You're describing the rear as chain link.
Right.
Correct?
But there's wrought iron on the sides.
This whole side has wrought iron also.
Gotcha. Okay.
On the upper side.
Yeah.
So we're doing some privacy maintaining. There's a couple of sections that have some bends in it, but I think once we open up the section that is for the new driveway, we can use some of that old iron fence to fill in the areas that aren't working. And then we return, the, the iron fence is actually in pretty good shape over in this area. That'll stay, and then we'll start the privacy fence again in this section over here. We've done a, there's a pretty elaborate lighting plan, and Jeremy has that. All these little purple dots are, are lights that have all been, we have a detailed photometrics so that we're not, that, there's no light escaping the property, and it's all night sky friendly. Everything is, is LED and night sky friendly, aiming down, so it's not affecting any of, you know, birds.
Are those poles or just bollards?
We have poles with lights down, and then we have lower bollards for path lights.
Just.
And step lights in the, in the rear area.
Right. Just a quick question on the EV charging. How is that going to operate? You know, a pay as you go, as you shut off non-business hours, that, you know, the neighbors aren't going to pull in there and plug in their car? Just curiosity.
That's, that's been interesting to research, the different options related to that. So we haven't finalized all of that. It's, it will probably be part of our electric bill, but we'll, we'll have to figure out, you know, how to.
Shutting it down.
Regulate that during, because we're not open 24 hours a day at this site. So in those non-business hours, you know.
I would suggest shutting it off at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I didn't, I forgot to mention that, now that you brought that up, the business hours regularly are Monday to Friday, eight to eight, I figure. So, and no weekends, so.
Okay. Thank you, Marty.
Okay.
Go ahead. Let's do, let's do the flyover now.
Everybody's in. So you're seeing the new driveway. This is sort of a bird's eye view. We have certain limitations with the program, so we haven't modeled the entire building exactly as it is. But it gives you a, a good enough sense, and the, the scale and, and size of the, and texture of the plant material that we're proposing is pretty accurate to what's shown here. Handicap ramp down to the lower area, that covered burglar space that we were discussing. Outdoor spaces behind the building, where the current dumpster is right now, if you've been back there.
The mature trees are pretty much what's there now?
The mature at the edge, the ones, the new ones inside are all new plantings.
Right, that's what I'm referring to, the perimeter.
Yeah, at the perimeter, there are some pretty large mature trees. We are losing one mature tree in the parking lot area that has some storm damage anyway, and it, it's not in, you know, we tried to work around parking to salvage it, but I don't think it, it was, it would be too complicated and lose too many parking spaces. And I think with the new, all of the new plantings that we'll be proposing, you know, we're making up for that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any commissioners have any questions?
So.
So.
Uh, next, I'd like to have Michael Bowe come and talk about the architecture. I know he loves working on these historic buildings.
Bring up the plans, Jeremy.
Good.
You're on the, you're on the site plan. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So I haven't been separate, that they're all separate sheets?
Just, just bring up A1. Yeah, basically, we are not increasing the, the footprint of the building.
For the record, this is Michael Bowe.
Yeah, okay, thank you. For the record, this is Michael Bowe, Registered Architect, Connecticut, 19 Tioga Street, Torrington, Connecticut. We're not increasing the footprint of the building, but we are enclosing an area where the lobby is at, at the lower portion of the screen. That's a covered area in order to create two entrances, vestibles, so that we can separate people, children to the right, adults to the left, for the different services that they use. We have two handicapped ramps, and the reason we have the handicapped ramp on the, on the right-hand side. hand side is for children, for more immediate direct access to the exterior case of any kind of problems that we'd have. The exterior of the building, we'd be basically just doing improvements to the building that are in kind. This is a shipo project, so we're really looking to, you know, we have to meet their standards, so everything that we do there, you know, the front porch area columns need to be replaced. We have some areas in the, the eaves of the building that have been damaged by critters, squirrels and things that are pretty ornate that we have to replace, but everything's just in kind to match what's there.
No elevator in here?
No elevator.
Obviously, the first floor is ADA compliant.
ADA compliant on the first floor.
Thank you.
Second floor is offices, you see, you can see with the, with the kitchen area and copier area. And the third floor again is, if you go up, is offices again. We do have two means of egress out of the space. We've got a stair that was probably built in the, I would say, early seventies maybe. It's not, not in the character of the building, but that's what we have. We will be doing work on it. Then this is the carriage barn in the back and we're just looking at using that for recreation space. We may do some modifications in the interior where the stairs at. Interestingly enough, this house, the floors are all concrete. You know, it's like, you know, it's like poured slap, horse system in the house and in the garage. So, he wanted a fireproof house.
It's solid.
Is there a basement to a Mike?
Yeah, there is a basement in here, but we won't be using that for any services. It's, you know.
Okay. Any questions?
Any commissioners have any questions of Mr. Bo?
Good here.
So Jeremy has written a fine memo, I might say, going over our plans. He does, in his memo, cite the sections of the regulations that the commission has to consider and we feel that you can make a decision that this does meet the specific standards and the general standards for special exception. We feel that the site design that we have is certainly in harmony. The location is a very good location, traffic won't be a problem. We've discussed parking, we more than meet the parking requirements. We, we understand what the requirements will be for filing a special exception on the land records and we've reviewed what Jeremy is suggesting, suggesting that you consider for, as conditions of approval and we are in agreement with those, we have no problems with those.
Thank you, Marty. Jeremy, you want to dive into your memo?
Sure.
Please.
Martin Connor, AICP, has filed a special exception and site plan application on behalf of McCall Foundation, Inc., at 263 Midgen Avenue, Assessors Map 109, Block 016, Lot 010, for a change of use from a previous rooming house for the elderly operated by the state of Connecticut to an office use and family wellness center to be operated by McCall Foundation. Property improvements are proposed for modified parking areas and traffic flow in and out of the property to modify landscaping on the property and to improve pedestrian areas and outdoor amenities on the property for use as a future wellness center. Previously, the property was owned by the state of Connecticut from 1969 to 2023 and operated as a state-run group home. The property is currently owned by McCall Foundation, Inc., is 0.7 acres, 0.78 acres in area and is located in the R6 residential zone. The proposed office use is allowed in the R6 zone by special exception approval under Section 3.1, subsection 5.80, other offices, and the interior, exterior use as a wellness center is allowed by special exception under Section 3.1, subsection 6.99, other outdoor activities. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of Section 8.4 and the special exception review standards of Section 8.2. A plan set has been submitted with the application titled McCall Foundation, Inc., 263 Midgen Ave, Torrington, Connecticut, MBL 109-016-010, prepared by Civil One, Woodbury, Connecticut, dated June 19th, 2024, 12 sheets. Also included is a property survey by Berkshire Surveying LLC dated January 5th, 2024. A lighting and landscaping plan by Lewis Fusco Landscape Architects revised to July 11th, 2024. A photometric plan by Sternberg Lighting dated July 16th, 2024, and building architectural and floor plans by Bo Studio Architects dated June 14th, 2024. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, this property was evaluated as part of a historic district study committee in 1998. I have added the historic resources inventory review sheets that were produced for the study to the application record for this application. The commission should ensure that the historic character of the buildings and the property are preserved as much as possible in the proposed property improvements. Other staff comments, economic development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, responded in support of the project on June 25th, 2024. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on July 9th, 2024. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject property that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, the landscaping plan is compliant with front yard requirements. The landscaping plan is compliant with screening requirements. The landscaping plan is compliant with parking island requirements. Black oak adjacent to the parking area is greater than 18 inches and therefore requires approval to remove from the commission. If retained, the landscaping plan shall be updated to show construction and post-construction protection. Lighting, this is obviously old, old comments. No photometric plan was submitted with this application. Please attach a photometric plan showing zero put candles at the property line. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage must conform to Section 5.15 of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for Review. Architecture Review Committee, this application was reviewed by the ARC, in an ARC meeting on June 27th, 2024. In discussions, the ARC stressed the importance of this property being located in the area of historic homes on Midgen Avenue, with this home being unofficially known as the Pease Mansion. Very limited work is being done to the exterior of the building and the committee raised no issues with that scope of work. The committee was supportive of the landscaping plan, parking lot plan, and discussion that took place on potential fencing replacement options. They were also supportive of, of proposed lighting fixtures and signage on the site, including the property address identifier to be placed on the sign. The ARC was particularly supportive of the proposed improvement for outdoor spaces to the rear of the home and the meditation and sitting areas to the rear of the property. The committee voted to make a positive recommendation on the proposed project and change of use to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The ARC minutes have been made part of the file record. Torrington Area Health District, TAHD, offered no comments on the plans. Engineering, in verbal discussions between Paul Cunson, City Engineer, and the City Planner on July 10th, 2024, Mr. Cunson stated that the plans as submitted are acceptable. Any changes proposed to the site that are not shown on the submitted plans may require additional review and approval modification. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus completed his, his application review on July 4th, 2024 and stated that he has no comments on this application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta conducted a review on this application on June 25th, 2024 and offered no comments on the project. WPCA, Edward Tausi, WPCA Administrator, provided comments on June 28th, 2024, requiring that a sanitary sewer discharge permit be obtained for this project. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette offered the following comments for this application on June 25th, 2024. Permits must be obtained from the Building Department for all work to be performed in association with the proposed change of use as applicable. In making a decision on this application, the commission should refer to Section 8.2 Special Exception and 8.4 Site Plan Review. In my opinion, the following standards from these sections are relevant to the commission's review of this project. One, Section 8.2.2.2B.1, the site plan shall provide for a site design which is in harmony with the neighborhood, accomplishes a transition in character between areas of unlike character, protects property values, preserves and enhances the appearance and beauty of the community, and provides a harmonious relationship between existing and proposed buildings in the vicinity, specifically with regard to the visual relationship in terms of scale, proportions, and particularly the historic significance of the existing buildings. Two, Section 8.2.2.2B.2, Location, the location of the proposed special exception use is such that the proximity of the proposed special exception use will not have a detrimental effect upon any church, school, library, playground, or similar facility found in Section 2.00 to 2.60 of the Table of Permitted Uses and the number of similar existing special exception uses in the vicinity is such that the granting of the proposed special exception will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Three, Section 8.2.2.2B.3, Traffic, vehicular and pedestrian traffic projected as a result of the use, vehicular and pedestrian traffic circulation, including traffic to and from the vicinity of the use, will not be hazardous or detrimental to the character of the zone or neighborhood. In making its determination with respect to this criterion, the commission shall consider the proposed location, size, and layout of the special exception use, its nature and the intensity of operations involved, and its relation to the local streets providing access to the site and the adequacy of proposed traffic flow controls and emergency access. The commission shall give due consideration to any recommendation by the city engineer regarding the adequacy of any public road proposed to be used for access. Number four, Section 8.2.2.2B.4, Parking, the commission shall consider the impact of parking location, number of spaces, and design on adjoining properties. Number five, Section 8.2.2B.5, the location of height, of the location and height of buildings, the location, nature, and height of walls and fences, the nature and extent of proposed signs, exterior lighting, landscaping, and open space on the site shall be such that these features shall be compatible and in harmony with the adjacent properties in the neighborhood, will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, or significantly impair the value thereof. Number six, 8.2.2B.6, the proposed use shall not have a significant adverse effect on property values or appearance in the neighborhood, taking into account the topography of the lot and the character, location, and height of proposed buildings, structures, and landscaping. Number seven, 8.2.2B.7, the commission shall be satisfied that the applicant has shown the adequacy of A, proposed method for disposal of wastes and provisions for volume and quality of water supply, B, proposed measures for prevention of pollution of surface and groundwater supplies and watersheds, C, proposed measures for control of stormwater runoff, D, proposed methods to foster an energy-efficient layout and landscaping plan, E, existing fire and police protection, transportation, water, and sewer facilities, schools, or other public facilities to meet the needs of the proposed use. Number eight, Section 8.2.2B.8, provisions for signs, if any, and proposed exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic, safety, compatibility, and harmony with adjacent properties in the neighborhood. Number nine, 8.2.2B.9, provisions for open space and landscaping and other safeguards to be compatible with adjacent property and the neighborhood in general. And number 10, 8.2.2C.1, the proposal's impact on land, structures, and features having special, having special historical, cultural, or architectural features. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve Special Exception 24-06 and Site Plan 1516, Change of Use, From Rooming House to Office Use and Wellness Center and Associated Site Improvements, for parking and landscaping with the following conditions. One, per WPCA comments of June 28th, 2024, the applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, per June 25th, 2024, comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Three, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his July 9th, 2024, comments regarding landscaping, lighting, and signage. Four, the applicant shall work with Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus to field adjust lighting cutoffs and shielding to prevent light spill onto adjacent property on the southern property boundary. Five, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained at the property entrance. Tracking of mud or sediment onto the public street shall be cleaned at the end of each workday during project construction. Six, in reviewing the standards of Section 8.2 of the zoning regulations for special exceptions, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds the proposed use, location, and site plan is reasonably protective of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the project, the project area, and the citizens of the city of Torrington for the granting of a special exception approval. Seven, zoning and grading permits shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing work on the property. Eight, a certificate of special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with CGS 8-3D. Nine, in accordance with Section 8.4.3 and 8.4.6 of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the final, of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy each of Sheets C 2.1, Overall Site Plan, a Site Layout Plan, and C 2.2, Grading Drainage and Utility Plan from the Civil One Plan Set, and the sheet titled Site Plan, Planting and Lighting, in the, in the Lewis Fusco Landscape Plan Set for filing with the city clerk in accordance with Section 8.4.3.2P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar Sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal, and Living stamp. Mylar Sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thanks, Jeremy. Do any commissioners have any questions?
Also.
Anyone remotely?
Also.
Jeremy, just a comment, just to reinforce, 8.2.2B.1, Site Plans Shall Provide For Site Design Which Is In Harmony With The Neighborhood And Soforth.
Yep.
And preserves and enhances the appearance and beauty of the community. I think overall, this is really a huge impact for this neighborhood.
Yep.
Kudos to the design team.
Yeah, positive, positive impact, you know, in my opinion.
So no commissioners have any questions, I'll go to the audience. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, that includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, that includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, does the applicant have anything to summarize?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Time is 7:52, I declare this public hearing closed. Go ahead, Diane.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Special Exception 24-06 and Site Plan 1516. Applicant Martin Connor on behalf of McCall Foundation, Inc., location 263 Midgen Avenue, Assessors Map 109, Block 016, Lot 010. Proposal, change of use from rooming house to. Proposal change of use from rooming house to office use and wellness center and associated site improvements. With the following conditions and recommendations. Number one, per WPCA. Comments of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to issuance of certi- certificate of occupancy. Number two, per June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette. The applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Three, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner outlined in his July ninth, twenty twenty four comments. Regarding landscaping, lighting and signage. Four, the applicant shall work with Assistant Planner. Nate Nar- Nardi Cyrus to field adjust lighting cutoffs and shielding to prevent light spill onto the adjacent. Property on the southern property boundary. Five, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained at the property entrance. Tracking of mud or sediment onto the public street shall be cleaned at the end of each workday during project construction. Six. In reviewing the standards of section eight point two of the zoning regulations for special exceptions. The Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the proposed use, location and site plan is reasonably protective of the health. Safety and welfare of the residents of the project area and the citizens of the City of Torrington for the granting of a special exception approval. Seven, zoning and grading permits shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing work on the property. Eight, a certificate of special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with CGS eight dash three D. Nine, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. Following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp. And chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one mile, one Mylar copy each of sheets C two dash one. Overall site layout plan and C two dash two. Grading, drainage and utility plan from Civil One Plan Set and the sheet titled Site Plan. Planting and lighting in the Lewis Fusco Landscape Plan Set for filing with the city clerk. In accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar Sheets shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the Commission. An engineer's seal and live ink stamp. Mylar Sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman. And prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Diane.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, so moved. Good luck, folks.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number five, old business. We have none. Moving on to agenda item number six, new business. A thirteen fifty-five East Main Street, Assessor's Map one thirty-seven block zero zero two, lot zero zero five. Applicant Brigazzi Building and Engineering, proposal special exception number twenty four dash zero eight. And site plan application number fifteen twenty-one. Construction of a seventy-two thousand five hundred square foot mini storage building and associated site work. In a local business, in a, in an LB local business zone. We need to schedule a public hearing date. The suggested date is September eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving on to agenda item number six, B. New business, one fifty Church Street, Assessor's Map one seventeen block zero zero six, lot zero zero six, one sixty. The first one was one fifty. One sixty Church Street Assessor Map, one seventeen block zero zero six, lot zero zero seven. One sixty-eight Church Street Assessor's Map, one eighteen block zero zero two, lot zero zero nine. Applicant City of Torrington, proposal change of zoning map. R six residential to DD Downtown District. We need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving out to agenda item number six, C, fifty-one Greenwood's Road. Assessor's Map. Two forty-three block zero zero seven lot zero zero two, applicant Christian Schumacher for Bomar. Proposal site plan application number fifteen twenty-five. Site plan modifications to construct a concrete pad and canopy for four hazardous material containers. In an I industrial zone. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, my name is Chris Schumacher. I represent Bomar. Uh, my personal address is one thirty-three Wellsford Drive, Gosden, Connecticut.
Thank you, sir. Just give us an overview of what you're looking to do, please.
Uh, yes, that's. Uh, no, it's the other one. It's the, uh, P one. So hello, Jeremy. Hello, Diane. Hello, Chairman. Yep, that's it. Thanks, Jeremy. So we are planning to put a, uh, storage area outside in our back parking lot. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that Bomar is a specialty chemical manufacturer. And we are proposing to put, um, some chemicals out here in some, uh, hazardous storage containers. Um, we're going to be putting four new ones and we're going to be relocating. One from the other side of the facility, which is over here. We'll be putting it over here. It's a small. Container.
Are we supposed to be able to see this?
I bet you zoomed in a little more.
We can't see anything. There's nothing on our screens.
Oh, you don't have?
No, no. Okay, we see a no.
You can see it here, right?
Okay, I'll, I'll start all over again.
Yes, sorry about that.
Didn't see it. No problem. Yeah, so this is our new storage area. It's going to be a, you know, concrete pad. There'll be a canopy over that. Uh, we have a central aisle for our forklift truck access and we're putting in four new containers here. And we're pu- uh, removing or I'm sorry, relocating, uh, an existing storage container from the other side of our facility. So we are, uh, basically asking. You know, the permit for the, uh, the concrete structure, the canopy, uh, there will be lighting. Underneath the canopy. And we're also looking for approval on some extra asphalt. Uh, to the facility which is in this location. And then along the back and then this piece here to help us with our, our truck traffic. So this is going to help our facility because we're going to be able to get some chemicals out of there and make some more room. And these, uh, these containers are, are self-sufficient. Um, they have fire protection. They have spill containment. And they also have, uh, air conditioning and heating. And that's, you know, for, for the chemicals that we use, we need that. So that's, that's basically the project.
Okay, thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions?
At this point? How hazardous are all these materials?
So these, uh, we'll be putting in class one A, I'm sorry, class one B and one C flammables. And there will, that's. Usually, uh, you know, for the building, that's an H three hazard. Um, and there'll also be isocyanates in here which are, which are toxic. And that's an H four in the building classification.
So are all of these and the site itself, the new site plan and everything? Where these are going to be stored and everything? All this is going to be shared with the fire department, right?
Yes, the Fire Marshal's already had a chance to look at this plan.
Okay, good.
Is there fire protection for the, the storage area? Or no?
No, it's all in the containers.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right, anyone else? Jeremy, you got your memo?
I, I have a, I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go Donovan.
Just in terms of, uh, a, a flood, flood risk. As I'm reading the plan. Um. What safety measures have you taken to make sure that these containers stay out of a flood? Um, scenario?
So these will be, um, anchored down to the concrete pad. There's also a curb. Um, it's about a four inch curb and that's mainly to make sure that if. If, you know, for wind-driven rain, if it gets underneath the canopy. Uh, we can, uh, collect that in a sump. And we would pump that out. You know, to the storm drain. And that would be tested before we would do that. Um, according to our EHS protocols. Um, if there's a spill in that area, it would go also to that blind sump. And then it would be pumped to, uh, to drums. Uh, you know, and sent to a hazardous. Waste remover. But to answer your question, I think it's the, the fact that we're anchoring down those, uh, those trailers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Okay. Christian Schumacher has filed site plan application number fifteen twenty-five on behalf of Bomar. At fifty-one Greenwood's Road, Assessor's Map two forty-three, block zero zero seven, lot zero zero two. For construction of a concrete pad. And canopy and, and installation of four hazardous material containers. The property is currently owned by Fifty-One Greenwood's Road LLC. Is seven point six one acres in area and is located in the I industrial zone. The primary use on the property as a manufacturing use under section three point one, subsection nineteen point zero zero remains unchanged. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four. A review of past applications on this property. Show that site plan number eleven sixty-one was approved for this property in June twenty fifteen. To add an enclosed loading dock and site lighting. An inland wetlands permit was issued in March twenty seventeen to replace a damaged driveway culvert. The plans have, plans have been submitted with the application titled Proposed Improvement Survey Map. Dimax Corporation, number fifty-one Greenwood's Road, Torrington, Connecticut. Prepared by Kratzert Jones and Associates, Inc., Milldale, Connecticut. Revised to July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, two pages. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, the new containers and proposed relocated structures on the property are compliant with zoning bulk regulations for the I industrial zone. Two, per plan notes, existing parking on the property will remain undisturbed. Three, a portion of the project is within the hundred-year flood zone. A floodplain permit will be required to ensure compliance with section seven point two point three. Of the zoning regulations for flood hazard reduction. A remediation area has been identified on the plans on the northern edge of the property. Further review will be conducted by the Assistant, by, by Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus for the issuance of a floodplain permit. Uh, four, per plans, the proposed storage area does not appear to interfere with any existing utilities. Property. New electrical for the hazmat containers will be fastened to the proposed canopy. Other staff comments. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, responded in support of the project. On August ninth, twenty twenty four. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Wetlands, there are regulated wetlands and watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject property. That would require wetlands review for this proposal. The applicant has an approved wetlands permit, W number WP dash twenty-four dash thirty-four. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. The regulated area for wetlands is unclear on the map. I assume that is the WB layer on the plan, but I have no scale to confirm the distances. Our regulations establish the regulated area as seventy-five feet from wetland soils, not open water. And one hundred feet from watercourses, i.e. the Still River. Please update the plan to clarify. Landscaping, this application does not require the submission of a landscaping plan. Lighting, new and existing lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the zoning regulations, which requires. Full cutoff lighting with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage must conform to section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Um, other, a floodplain permit will be required prior to starting work on the site. For floodplain regulations, see section seven point two point three of the regulations. These items jump out at me, but there might be more that will need to be addressed for the permit. Show calculations for grades for floodplain remediation and relabel as compensatory storage area. Clearly show base flood elevation, BFE. If trailers have utilities, they will need to be raised at or above BFE. Show, show flood protections in addition to curbing to relocated hazard waste unit. I am okay. Hazardous waste unit. I am okay with raising the curbing to BFE in areas with the floodplain as hazardous waste containment strategy. Show fuel storage tanks at or above BFE. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for review. Torrington Area Health District, TAHD, offered no comments on the plans. Engineering, Paul Kunsen, City Engineer, submitted the following comments on August sixteenth, twenty twenty four. One, storm pipes should not have bends. Two, detailed proposed catch basin and eight-inch storm pipe invert in and out elevation slope material, et cetera. Two A, where is the outlet of proposed eight-inch storm pipe? Needs rip wraps, rip wrap splash pad or flow spreader. Three, how will tractor trailers leave the loading dock? Can they make hard left turn and exit? Can northerly truck? Get around and leave if adjacent southerly truck is parked loading? Show paths of trucks leaving. Police Traffic. Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus completed his application review. On August sixth, twenty twenty four, and stated that he has no comments on this application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta conducted a review on this application on August seventh, twenty twenty four. And offered no comments on the project. He verbally indicated he is okay with, uh, I think I meant to say project there, or plan, one of the two. Um, WPCA. Edward Tausi, WPCA Administrator, offered no comments on the plans. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette offered the following comments for this application on August seventh, twenty twenty four. Permits must be obtained from the Building Department for all work to be performed. Uh, conclusion. I recommend that the Commission approve site plan number fifteen twenty-five. To construct concrete pad and canopy and locate four hazardous material containers. In accordance with submitted plans with the following conditions. One, per August seventh, twenty twenty four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette. The applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Two, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner. Outlined in his August nineteenth, twenty twenty four comments regarding inland wetlands, site lighting and floodplain information. Final plans for filing shall clearly identify the inland wetlands regulated area. Per comments, the applicant shall also update information regarding base flood elevations and flood protection on the final plans. Three, the applicant shall update plans to address August sixteenth, twenty twenty four comments from Paul Kunsen's. City Engineer as noted in the City Planner Application Review Memo. Four, zoning and floodplain permits shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing work on the property. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan sheets, including the engineer's stamp. And chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of sheet P one, Proposed Improvement Survey Map. For filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar Sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the Commission and engineer's seal and live ink stamp. Mylar Sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to, to the approval of zoning. Or grading, that should say floodplain, permits to begin construction or site work. Um, Diane, you might just want to change that to floodplain on the, where it says grading.
Zoning and flood, or floodplain?
And flood, and floodplain permits, yep.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any Commissioners have any questions or comments?
Good.
Christian, just a quick, just a quick comment on that plan, uh, fixtures will be located. I believe there's a typo. I believe it's towards the center. It's two wars.
Okay.
On the plan, just a little typo there, you know?
You just note that for your final, for the final plans that you're going to file.
There's another typo right in the middle too.
Yeah, which one? If the trailers have utilities, they will, W I L, need to be raised at above eight feet. Just like typo there. Thank you. All right. So no comments. We're good?
Good.
All right. You all set?
Uh, so one other thing I just want to point out, like in the email that I sent to you, Jeremy, that we do not, we're not going to have any hazardous waste, just hazardous storage.
Hazardous, hazardous. Yes. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Go ahead, Diane.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan one five two five. Applicant Christian Schumacher for Bomar. Location fifty-one Greenwood's Road Assessor's Map two four three block zero zero seven lot zero zero two. Proposal site modifications to construct a concrete pad and canopy and locate four hazardous material containers with the following conditions and recommendations. One, per August seventh, twenty twenty-four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant should, shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Two, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four comments regarding inland wetlands, site lighting and floodplain information. Final plans for filing shall clearly identify the inland wetlands regulated area. Per comments, the applicant shall also update information regarding base flood elevations and flood protection on the final plans. Three, the applicant shall update plans to address August sixteen, twenty twenty-four comments from Paul Kunzen's City Engineer as noted in the City Planner Application Review Memo. Four, zoning and floodplain permits shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing work on the property. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan sheets, including engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of sheet P dash one, Proposed Improvement Survey Map for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheets shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. Mylar sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning and floodplain permits to begin construction or site work.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who was that?
Yeah.
I think it was Greg, yeah.
Opposed. So move. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, uh, I'll catch up with you with a, with a, uh, approval letter and then we'll, we'll go from, go from there. Okay. Thank you.
I'm moving on to agenda item number six, D one thirty-eight Litchfield Street Assessor's Map one sixteen block zero zero nine lot zero zero nine. Applicant Richard Lopez, proposal site plan application number fifteen twenty-three, change of use from a rooming house to a single family home with an accessory dwelling unit in the D D downtown district zone. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, sir. My name is Richard Lopez and I'm the owner of the property of one thirty-eight Litchfield Street, but my residence is in three oh five West Les Drive in Torrington.
Okay. Thank you. Just give us a brief overview of what you're trying to do, sir?
Yeah. So, um, the property that we purchased back in twenty twenty-one, um, had already this unit when we purchased it prior. Um, and when we purchased it from the owner, the owner had explained to us that this was already kind of um, kind of inherited the property as is with the unit as well. So now we're trying to sell the property and therefore we're trying to, uh, get this unit um, up to, I guess, up to code and up to violation with the, as, as it stands currently.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Get Jeremy on board here as soon as he gets back.
Have to be the A V.
Yeah, there you go.
Go ahead, Jeremy. Um, yeah, so, uh, I, I, from our standpoint, um, the Richard needs a, uh, certificate of zoning compliance to, for, for the, for the sale of the house.
Correct.
Um, but we didn't, we have no records of this, of, of the, the unit actually being so we're, we're basically in here cleaning up the, the approvals. Uh, so I can issue that certificate of compliance.
All righty. Go ahead with your memo.
Yep. Please. Richard Lopez has filed site plan application number fifteen twenty-three for one thirty-eight Litchfield Street. Assessor's Map one sixteen block zero zero lot nine lot zero zero nine to convert a former rooming boarding house to a single family dwelling. Mister Lopez has also requested an approval for, for an attached interior accessory dwelling unit, A D U, within the existing home. The property is currently owned by Richard Lopez and Nancy Galdemez is zero point two nine acres in area and is located in the D D downtown district zone. The primary use as a single family dwelling is allowed in the D T, in the D D downtown district zone by special exception approval under section three point one subsection one point one zero. Accessory dwelling units are allowed in the D T, D D downtown district zone by site plan approval under section three point one subsection one point two five. Under the provisions of section five point twelve point four of the regulations, a change of use of this house to a single family dwelling may be, may be approved administratively by site plan approval since it is proposed to be changed to a less intense conforming use. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four. A review of past information on this property show that a certificate of zoning compliance was issued by the land use department in May twenty nineteen for a rooming house use on the property. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, I recommend that a waiver of submission of an engineered site plan be approved in accordance with section eight point four point four of the regulations as no exterior work is proposed and the parking requirements are reduced. Two, the current gross floor area of the home, not including the interior A D U is two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four square feet. The requirement for the size of the A D U under section five point one of the regulations is a minimum of four hundred square feet and a maximum of eight hundred and forty-seven square feet, thirty percent of the main dwelling. The proposed square footage of the A D, A D U is four hundred and seventy-five square feet for a layout sketch submitted by the applicant. The proposed A D U size and location is compliant with the zoning regulation. Other staff comments. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, offered no comments on this application. Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner submitted the following comments on August twenty first, twenty twenty-four. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject property that would require wetlands reviews for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, no landscaping plan is required for this application. Lighting, no lighting is proposed on this application. All lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the zoning regulations, which requires full cutoff fixtures with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. Signage, no signage was included in this approval. All future signage must conform to section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the A R C for review. Torrington Area Health District, T A H D offered no comments on the plans. Engineering, Paul Kunzen, City Engineer, offered no comments on this application. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus offered no comments on this application. Buyer, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta offered no comments on this application. W P C A, Edward Towsey, W P C A Administrator, offered no comments on this application. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette offered the following comments for this application on August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. If allowed by the planning and zoning department, a complete set of permits must be obtained from the building department for all trades and the work associated with each of them. A complete set of associated plans must be provided with each application. All required inspections must be requested from the building department for approval of all work performed. Water Company, James Myers of the Torrington Water Company completed his review on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four and offered no comments on the application. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve site plan number fifteen twenty-three to convert a former rooming boarding house to a single family dwelling and a four hundred and seventy-five square foot accessory dwelling unit subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his August twenty first, twenty twenty-four comments regarding landscaping, lighting and signage. Two, per August twelfth, twenty twenty-four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for this project. Three, no individual rooms may be rented within the single family dwelling. The approved accessory dwelling unit may be rented as a separate dwelling.
Thank you, Jeremy. Are all these windows and so forth all pre-existing on this plan?
Yes.
Everything is?
Yes. Everything, yeah, everything that's there on the plan was pre-existent prior to us purchasing the home.
Okay.
We're just, uh, describing as it is, as it stands right now.
Okay. So the room, it's spelled out just room, that's the bedroom?
Correct.
Yeah.
So if you look at it, where's this door entrance? There's like a very small hallway.
Right, right.
Uh, there's a door that's right next to the entrance of the door. Then there's that living area and there's a stair case that goes into well, it's in the same floor, but it just goes into that kitchen, goes into the bathroom.
Yep.
And then we created a door between the bathroom and the main um, house to connect the unit to make it, um, flow, flow throughout.
Just a comment, you know, just watch your egress window size that it's adequate for the bedroom, you know, if you're changing anything around.
So is that window, does that window just go into the interior of the house where it's just, just interior?
Yes.
Existing bedroom window does?
Yes.
So was that a, that at one point, was that an addition onto the house maybe?
I'm not sure.
Kind of weird.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. It's just, again, uh, when we purchased the house, uh, back in twenty twenty-one, the owner explained to us that he inherited the house from his father and his father had built it back in nineteen fifty-five. It was just how.
Re-zoning.
Yeah.
Re-zoning.
Yeah. And so we're trying to just kind of, you know, clean up what was already there.
Right.
So the, so you, you said this is the, this is basically the whole end of the house when, when we talked earlier.
Correct. If you look at the maps, um, if you look at the maps on, on, in the, uh,
Yeah, the, the assessor's card.
Yeah, it's the, it's the latter portion of the home.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. So when you purchased it in twenty twenty-one, I'm assuming that this came up because of your title search or your buyer's title search now?
Yes.
Is that when it came up? So when you purchased it in twenty twenty-one, it didn't come up?
It didn't come up because when we purchased the home, it was labeled as a single family on the assessor's office. And so everything was clear. But then when we were trying to sell it again, the assessor's office still clears it as a single family, but then planning and zoning clears it as boarding and rooming. And so there was that confusion. Therefore, the bank then came to us saying, clear this up before we can finalize the sale.
So were you able to go back to Caddick though? And, and I mean, because you have an insurance policy with Caddick, right? On the title work.
The title insurance.
Insurance company.
Yes.
So they can, yeah.
Yes.
And the appraiser didn't note it or find it that it was, that's how it was categorized?
No, and then it come up.
No. So the, the, the one piece, the one, and the one thing that established the use was a twenty nineteen, that twenty nineteen certificate of zoning compliance that we, that we had on file that said, that said rooming house on it. So that was sort of the use that I, that I had to go by.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there, usually when, when we do those certificate of zoning compliance, they pull some sort of files. That was done by Rista.
Yes.
But so that, so there's usually some sort of file search to figure out what the use is. So it was, um, so that was the, that was the one piece of, of document that I had to go by on the, on the use. In addition to some of the notes that were on the, you know, the assessor's card too, but.
It just sounds like the title company when you purchased it dropped the ball. And didn't.
Yeah.
Pick up on that.
Right.
That, that's a, yeah.
Right, of course. And we, when we were going in, I mean, the owner was transparent with us. He, he said he used it as a boarding house himself.
Right.
Although the, the city was zoning, well, the assessors was assessing it as a single family home.
Yeah.
He was still using it and renting it out as a boarding home. And so.
And we do run into, I wouldn't call them conflicts, but different defined uses with the assessor's office pretty routinely and we, we try to straighten out our records as we find them.
No, I understand that. It's just that it's unfortunate that you have to.
Right, yeah.
Go through this now because in twenty twenty-one, they should have picked up on that.
Of course. And, and they didn't unfortunately, and now we're having to.
Right.
So, so what, what is, um, so one of the bedrooms is here. Is there six bedrooms remaining in the rest of the house? Because it's a seven bedroom, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that was the reason why I just put that last piece in there that
Yeah.
for either you or the new owner that they don't.
Of course.
Rent out individual rooms unless they come back in to try to get a rooming house.
Yeah, of course. No, the, the current.
Covers us.
The current buyer of the home is using it as, as a single family home. It's a very large family that's purchased the house and so the home itself is very large. Um, and so it's ideal for a large family.
Thank you, sir. Any other commissioners have any questions?
No.
Go ahead, Diane.
Like to make a motion to approve site plan one five two three. Applicant Richard Lopez, location one thirty-eight Litchfield Street. Assessor's Map one sixteen block zero zero nine lot zero zero nine. Proposal convert a former rooming house to a single family dwelling when this, with an accessory dwelling unit with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his August twenty-one, twenty twenty-four comments regarding landscaping, lighting and signage. Two, per August twelfth, twenty twenty-four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project. Three, no individual rooms may be rented within the single family dwelling. The approved accessory dwelling unit may be rented as a separate dwelling.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So move. Good luck, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Richard.
All right, moving on to agenda item number seven, correspondence, A zoning and blight violation update. Everybody should have it in their packet.
Um, there's not a lot of changes since, since Nate was in here, uh, last month. Um, the one update I can give to our, to our site plan issue with the food truck is that they were sent a notice by our, um, Corporation Council and it gave until August fifteenth to, to do the work on the site. Um, there was.
August fifteenth?
Fifteenth, which is already passed. So I have a, I have a follow-up tomorrow. Um, so, so the, there's items that need to be done on the site in terms of like the gravel parking lot, the ADA access and a few other things. Then there's also the sidewalk, which is the major, you know, cost to the, to the property owner. I did see that all before you dig was all marked out and I did get a call from the, from the, um, from the contractor that was going to do the sidewalks. So I think the sidewalks are in process, but there's not a, to me, there's not a lot of excuses to have not done the other site work.
He never posted a bond for the sidewalks, did he?
No.
Back in the beginning?
No. So that, so my, all along, my enforcement has been bond them or build them. You gotta do one of the two.
Yeah.
And, and even the bonding, we usually only keep it for a defined amount of time. Yeah, the, the way the statutes are written now is we're not, unless it's for like a, like a subdivision public improvement, we can't force anyone to do bonding. We do it routinely, but we can't make people do it. All we can do is say you're not getting a C O and you're not opening until you do the work then if you don't want to bond it. Um, I think it was an unintended consequence because the, the, um, Home Builders Association pushed for that regulation amendment. And I think this is an unintended consequence because, because everybody in my positions now are saying, fine, you don't want to bond it. You're not opening until all the work is done. Because that's our only legal, legal recourse. So the problem here is he's been operating for three years, you know, to invite, without following much of our site plan that we approved.
I actually might get better this way.
Like it better this way?
Oh, yeah. I always, I hated bonding because you, you always had to chase the guy to get it done at the end.
We still do it routinely, but we just can't force, we can't say you're, you're not getting a permit unless you do this.
I'd rather take the other tact and tell him, you don't need a bonding. You just can't use it until you do all the work. I like that.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, sometimes we, you know, like for some commercial sites, we'll bond like landscaping or something. Yeah, I mean, sometimes we, you know, like for some commercial sites, we'll bond like landscaping or something, which I, which I'm okay with, but like, you know, the major pieces of the site, I don't want to be bonding for, for, uh,
So how long have we been charging him a hundred fifty dollars a day?
Uh, four or five months.
And I'm assuming he must owe us tens of thousands of dollars.
I, I haven't done the calculations, but I think you're right. I haven't, I haven't done it up to, up to like.
Well, it's forty-five hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Hundred, you know, thirty days.
Yep. I think it's been since March. I want to say March.
So just in the off chance he, uh, he, he accomplishes everything he's supposed to, you know, say by the end of the month or September. He still owes us those fines.
Yeah, and, and you know, we typically will, you know, if we gain compliance, we'll typically sort of, you know, I, I don't want to say negotiate, but we'll, we'll let, we'll let people ask for a reduction. But we're not, we wouldn't forgive all the fines because we've spent significant resources on this.
Yeah, I can understand that. I'm, I'm, I don't think he should. This guy's been, this has been three years.
Yeah.
You know, he's, he's had plenty of time. If he went out there with a spoon, he could have dug the sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, and, uh, and you know, this is our, you know, not, not allowing people to open are, is our only, um, leverage in getting, in getting site work done. So he just, just.
He was open before.
Open, open, yeah, opened and continued to operate, right?
Yeah, and there's no way of stopping him once he's operating.
I mean, I can't, I'm not gonna go up there and yank him out of the truck, so.
No, no, I, I understand. That's what I'm saying. There's no way really to stop the guy.
Yeah, so, and, except for citations, which is what we did.
Yeah. Or sure, I mean, I don't know if, if the courts would do anything in that case.
Well, that was, that was the purpose of the, uh, the notice that, um, Corporation Council sent last month was, you know, we're taking you to court if you don't get this done.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, maybe that'll lit a fire.
Yeah. So that was my, that's really my major one. The rest are, the rest are just, you know, if anybody, anybody has any questions on any of the, the other ones.
I sent you a couple of months and months back. I was just curious, did anybody ever done that, anything with that?
Yeah, you, I, I know at least one of them we dealt with through Blight, and I think we got that one resolved. I think it was over near kind of the Lowe's area. Side streets.
Yeah, it was up in the north end, yes.
Yeah, I, I think that one got resolved. I don't, I don't recall the other one. Ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have not seen the lower Charles Street one come on under Blight. Seventy-six Charles.
Oh, the, is that the one on the corner?
No, it's three houses back from the apartment building, the same side.
Is it, is it Blight or zoning?
It's Blight. There's all overgrown.
So it wouldn't be on it. This is only zoning. There's a separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a separate.
Let Nate know, or, um, Ashley know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, she keeps a separate list.
What's the, um, Jeremy, what's the deal with the house on, um, Prospect Street that you can't even see? It's buried behind. There's a car in there.
What are you talking about? Kiss Marchick's house?
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, we have an active, we have an active case for that one, and, and it's been, it's just, it's been weird because there's been so many, like, we've had, we've been active with this one, trying to get, trying to get, uh, a judgment from the court, and, and the case keeps getting delayed and pushed off and delayed. It's, it's been nothing but like reschedules and delays.
Are you trying to, are you trying to foreclose on it?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's been the, but, you know.
But he's a lawyer, and didn't he also, he, he, he went at the bankruptcy a bunch of times and.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of what slowed it down, and it was, yeah, there was a bunch of procedural things that just completely slowed it down. Um, I haven't really gotten an update on that one in a while, but I, I do know.
There was an article in the paper the other day about.
It met, uh, Attorney Magistrally came down and said that he had seen some activity on the site, like there was some sort of cleanup with the cars going on. Um, but I haven't actually physically seen it.
All right.
What about the mountaintop discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago about the cleanup of their, um?
I, I do have a feeling this one's gonna come to a head, and I'm not sure when. Um, we weren't even gonna discuss it until they got a, uh, until they got a restoration plan done by Wetlands, through Wetlands. Um, I was assured about a month, month and a half ago, they were, they were gonna do that. Nate reached out to the company, um, to, reached out to the soil scientist, uh, environmental scientist from the company that they were using, and that person had said they had not been contacted. So I, I have a feeling we're gonna have to do something with this one.
Well, the last discussion was we all kind of agreed that we were going to shorten up the timeframe that they had requested.
It was September one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that was, that was, um,
We weren't.
Voice to them?
Yeah, to get, to get the, uh, yes, to get, we wanted them to get at least the plan in or significant progress that towards getting a plan for rest, Wetlands Restoration in by September one, so I don't. All I know is Nate told me that he had called the soil scientist that was supposed to be doing this work, and he said they hadn't even contacted him.
Okay, so, so the September one's not gonna make it.
I don't think so. So we're gonna just have to deal with it after Labor Day, more than likely.
And then what's the update on the Pine Wood Road gas station?
I, uh, so the zoning permits expired. It's Borgesi doing, doing, well, is the permitee.
Money problems.
Yeah, I reached out to Borgesi.
As the same guy.
I reached, but I reached out to Borgesi and I said, your zoning permits expired. You gotta pull a new zoning permit and give me some sort of timeframe, and I haven't heard from Borgesi. I gotta follow back up with him.
And what about the peddler? Anything moving on that? I see they have scaffolds.
Greg's probably got a better, uh, better update than I do.
What is it, Greg?
It's, it's, um, um, we have a project manager, um, what is the name of it? I can't remember the name of the company, Val Pharo. She works.
Uh, Good Earth Advisors.
Yeah, Good Earth, Good Earth, LLC. So she's project manager of, uh, the, um, tasks that we were given, uh, to meet the court requirements. And, um, right now, we're in the process of getting an assessment of the building. Uh, we have an engineering company going in Thursday, and they will probably submit their report on the condition. It's a conditions assessment. And that will be submitted by sometime around the fifteenth or so of September. We hope to have that report. We did get the grant money that almost paid for it all, which is good. Um, we will probably then, after we get that done, be able to understand, you know, what, you know, pinch points there might be inside that building. Um, and then we'll, we'll, we will go to the court eventually with the final, the final court hearing, I think is, I want to say November fifth. And, um, we have to bring our plan to the court at that point. Now, of course, our plan will be to, um, develop, ha, uh, have a developer develop the project or the, the property. We don't, obviously, Torrenton Development Corporation does not want to take that on. We don't want to own it. We don't want to do anything. We are, we are nothing more than the receiver. All we are right now is a property manager. We have the power to, to correct deficiencies. And one of the things we have to do now is stop water from getting in. That roof patch quote was done, finished. We agreed, uh, executive, executive committee agreed to go forward with it to, um, stop the degradation of water getting into the building. So what we're doing right now is trying to stabilize the building. That's our main goal. Uh, Torrenton Development Corporation in, in accordance with, in working with the city is working on trying to get the building stabilized. So we want to stop water penetration. If we see anything else during the conditions assessment, we might have to address that. We'll have to go for ship out for grant money. We, 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 you know, we're, we're actually proactively working on grant money. Um, so that we'll be able to do that. Everything we spend, whether it's, uh, no matter where it comes from, whether it's grant money or not, anything we spend on this building, whether on the management of it, and any physical repairs or modifications, whatever has to be done, that's all charged back to, um, the building. It's leaned on the property. So that when the building sells, the Torrenton Development Corporation will be first in line for the money. You know, and, and what's good about the law is the law, uh, does make it be, make it that hard that it is that the receiver is first in line. Normally, you know as well as anybody, a bank is always first in line.
Mm-hmm.
The bank puts, if the bank puts money out, they're the first ones who get paid. But in this particular case, um, we're first in line. So I'll, if it's sold for whatever it sells for, the first monies come to us and the rest of it goes. Huh?
Dollar?
Dollar? What do you mean?
Oh, for a dollar?
I don't get it. It's worth a dollar?
Could it possibly sell for a dollar?
It could self, it, well, uh, here's how it works. The offers that come to, we bring to the court, um, will have to be approved by the court. So, um, Jason Hospitality can object, and they can, they can certainly appeal, and they can do all kinds of crazy things because the law is, allows those things, but we as the receiver are charged with bringing a plan to the court. And then if that plan is a developer who's willing to pay a certain amount of money, then we have to pitch that to the court, and then the court will make the decision um, as to whether or not that's an acceptable amount or not. That, you know, the other due diligence on our part is once we get the conditions assessment, the next step is getting a, an appraisal again. We have had it appraised, but it was a drive-by appraisal. This will be now a deep dive, meaning that the appraiser will go inside the building. We'll also have the conditions assessments to read. And, and I, I don't know, uh, uh, I would guess that, um, that that will have an effect on what the appraised value will be. Um, and then at that point, um, you know, you, I mean, whatever I asked them, the offer has to be fair. I mean, if the offer isn't fair, the, the court won't approve. I mean, if it's appraised at, you know, a million dollars and somebody's offering half a million, chances are it's not gonna sell. And that's just not gonna happen.
And, and the court system will, the court system is good with just one appraisal?
Um, I'm not real sure about that. I, I couldn't answer that question. Um, it was okay for the original filing. The one appraisal was all we needed to file the, the, the lawsuit to take, to become receiver. It may require more, um, this is all new, by the way. So you understand this new legislation that allowed this to take place, which is a blight, uh, this is part of your statewide blight enforcement and legislation. This is the actual first case that's been awarded to anyone under this legislation. Torrenton's the first. Yes, there was one earlier, and I think it was West Hartford, but it's not.
It was Hartford, yeah.
Yeah, it was West Hartford, yeah. But it was nothing like this. That was property that already had conveyed to someone else. It was like a, a rubber stamp thing. It was, is, it was not.
So Greg, that one was an abandonment like that?
Yeah.
The owner, the owner had disappeared, so there really wasn't anybody to fight the receiver?
Right.
The receiver, do the receivership, so, yeah.
So this.
And then the city, I, I think the city of Hartford took it and redeveloped it, and then.
Exactly. The city Hartford took and redeveloped it. This is nothing like that. This is the true meaning of the legislation, which is where you have a owner who's just not doing anything, and you can force the movement, um, of getting the property into a usable and, you know, con- contributory method of, you know, it's there, it's working for you as downtime. We have a lot of positive things going on. Um, every day, we're getting new information. The state is interested in the property, so they're keenly aware of what we're trying to do. So right now, I'm hopeful, but understand conditions assessment can start blowing things up because once the engineering company goes in and takes a look at what's inside, um, and we get that report, I mean, that can be, there could be some serious problems inside that building that will cause my, many headaches. So we just gotta take it a little bit at a time, and we're putting all our ducks in a row in hopes that, um, we'll be able to, uh, bring a plan to the court, and the court will approve it, and then we'll actually get something going. But. Still. I'm, I'm sorry?
Thanks for that info.
Okay. You'll see a website. The website hasn't been finished yet. We're just getting, well, yeah, we're getting the Torrenton Development Corporation is just gonna put up a website. And then in the website, we would try to post for transparency purposes and keeping the public updated, we would post the developments as they start, as they proceed. Um, unfortunately, we're behind on that because we didn't have a website to start with, so.
Right.
We'll have to see how fast we can get it up and running. So. That's it.
It only took one of those offers.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Um, so are we, are we set with the enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the other thing I have is, uh, is, yeah, the, uh, this, this notification from Loadstar Energy, uh, petition, petition to the Siting Council for, for a, um, so another solar project on Lover's Lane. I've been getting a couple of calls anyway from the, from the condos next door,
Mm-hmm.
uh, concerned about stormwater design and stuff like that. Um, are, I, I do know the one up on, and, on the Litchfield line, um, the Conservation Commission came up with some comments. Uh, this commission could, um, put comments in to, to the Siting Council. They can do what they want with them. They don't, you know, they can, they can use it or not use it. Um, we do get like official responses if, if we weigh in as a, as a commission. Um, I think the prudent thing to do would just be to go in and send everyone the link to the Siting Council, you know, the full list of documents. Um, and maybe we could just talk about this again at our next meeting. We're only three weeks out. If everybody wants to look at it, and if any concerns come up with the project, we could do official, um, you know, official comments, or, or commissioners can do individual comments, um, as residents, that totally up to.
I think that's a good idea. Send the link so that we can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yep.
What's the total acreage?
Um, I think the project's around seventeen acres, something like, something around there.
And, and you know anything about it as far as it's, is it like the same, structured the same as Torrington Street where they're, they're used for so many years? And then they're just abandoned?
I, I don't know. Yeah, they always have to come, you know, the Siting Council always requires them to do an abandonment plan.
Yeah.
Um, I think the law was changed last year, maybe, that required all the structures in the ground to come out.
Yeah.
Instead of, because they used to just allow them to cut them off at ground level.
Oh.
Uh, you know, the supports and everything, but, um, and there was some, some language on preserving farmland soils, which I think that is. It's, it's an old hayfield.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I haven't even had time myself to dive into the, into the nuts and bolts of it, but I will, uh, I'll grab it and send everybody a link in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Okay.
We can just revisit it in a few weeks.
Yeah.
All right, there we go.
Yeah.
All right, the time is eight fifty. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Adjournment.
To make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Aye.